I want to call this meeting to order. We had an executive session at 6:30 this evening to discuss personnel and legal issues. Mr. Tepper?
Mr. Hauser. Eppson. Mrs. Cozer?
Present.
Mrs. May?
Here.
Mr. McCannan?
Here.
Mr. Music?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mrs. Sarath?
Here.
Dr. George?
Virtual meeting present.
And this little cabinet?
Here. Thank you. Before we begin with any other business, regret to announce this evening that a member of our junior high school food service employee Denise Shirely passed away last week, and so I'm requesting in this moment that we have a moment aside. Thank you. Not seeing Mr. Naples here at the moment, I'd asked him earlier if there was a solicited report, and he informed me that there was no report. At this time, Dr. Tepper, two per damage report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Macasio. Good evening and welcome. I am extremely pleased to state that we are in our seventh week of school with our students in a brick-and-mortar instructional model, and it is going remarkably well despite of our current unprecedented situation with the pandemic. Our teachers, school nurses, counselors, administrators, and entire support staff have been working diligently to provide the best education possible for our students while keeping the health, safety, and welfare of all as their number one priority. In order to be as transparent as possible, I would like to share some of our current statistics as of 4 o'clock PM this Tuesday afternoon, October 13. Of the total population of 3,587 students at Greater Lake Trove, I would like to report the following regarding our student population since August 31st from our first day of school with our students regarding our COVID situation. 9% or 340 of our students who presented to their parents or to our school nurses with either COVID-19 symptoms or as a close contact of positive cases. So 340 of our students out of 3,587 students did present with symptoms either to our school nurse or reported by their parents, which equals 9% of our entire school population. 6% or 210 of our students were seen by their primary care physician due to COVID-19 symptoms. 3% or 99 of our entire student body had a COVID-19 test, and 0.3% or 9 of our students were COVID-19 positive. While looking at a 14-day cycle, which is recommended by the Pennsylvania Department of Education and Pennsylvania Department of Health, Greater Lake Trove School District reports the following. From August 30th, which marked our first day of school for students, through September 12th, that 14-day period, Greater Lake Trove School District had zero positive COVID cases. From September 13th through September 26th, Greater Lake Trove School District had a report of four positive cases, which included three cases at Lake Trove Elementary School and one case at the senior high school. From September 27th through October 10th, Greater Lake Trove School District had a report of one positive COVID case at Mountain View Elementary School. Monday, October 11th began another 14-day cycle, and Greater Lake Trove School District has one reported positive case at Lake Trove Elementary School and three positive cases at the senior high school. Again, that is as of 4 o'clock this afternoon. These numbers of positive cases total nine students, which equates to 0.3% of our entire student population of 3,587 students. Due to HIPAA and FERPA regulations, we are unable to disclose how and where these individuals may have contracted the virus, or if there were individuals from the same family household. We understand our county positive COVID numbers have been on an increase during the past couple of weeks. We will continue to monitor our county COVID positive cases, but will also closely monitor our individual school buildings and situations that may arise in the Greater Lake Trove School District. Additionally, we continue to be asked, what number of positive cases do we need to have before we close our schools? We do not believe that there is a magical number to determine if we need to close our schools. Every case and situation is different and varies. We can assure our families and school community that we will, that we have, and will continue to complete punctual contact tracing and work in conjunction with the Westmoreland County Department of Health to make decisions based on the health, safety, and welfare of our entire school community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tepper.
Yes, and now, we would like to, we have somebody joining us along with Dr. George through the Google Meet, Mrs. Erin Eckert from the Pennsylvania School Board Association Member Services, and she is going to recognize one of our school board members for their years of service here at Greater Lake Trove School District. So I'm going to turn it over to Erin.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear you all right?
Yes.
All right, off to a good start. All right, let me see here quick if I can present my screen. Oh, it says I can't share my screen. That's okay, I can adapt. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Erin Eckert, and I am a member services manager from the Pennsylvania School Board Association. I'd like to first thank you for including me on this evening's agenda and for your continued membership at PSBA. This evening, I had the honor and privilege to recognize a member of the Greater Lake Trove School Board. Mrs. Heidi Cozar has dedicated 16 years, oh, sorry, I think I did some feedback my back. Has dedicated 16 years of service to the district and community. This dedication includes serving on the Greater Lake Trove Partners and Education Foundation Board, as well as representing for the joint operating committee at Westmoreland CTD. PSBA has been honoring long-term school directors for their volunteer service to their local community for the honor role of school board service for nearly 35 years. We believe that school directors have the desire to give to their local communities, and the presentation of the certificate is a way of showing our appreciation for their dedicated service to public education and the children and community which they serve. The license and school board service is firmly embedded in our history and our nature and its commitment to public education. The Pennsylvania School Board Association, founded in 1805, has a rich history as a fundamental association established in the United States. The concept of school board member, it describes an ethical principle individual within the society served. School directors must show a belief in the value of public schools and a local control of public education for the benefit of all students. Today, school directors are expected to offer more services along with world-class instruction with limited resources. These expectations provide a tremendous challenge for school directors who are unpaid volunteers who work tirelessly, giving them free time away with their families to contribute to the school and community they serve. PSBA has been recognized as a member of dedicated local boards with long-term service since 1983. The honor roll is the associated each way of thanking you. To those individuals, that by virtue of their giving unselfishly at their time and pounds for the benefit of public schools, certainly a great help. It is the immense pleasure of running and supporting your service and helping a part of their legacy. So I'd like to thank Heidi Cozar for 16 years of service. That is a tremendous accomplishment. Congratulations. Now, I do promise PSBA does have a physical copy of the certificate for you, and it will be mailed out by the end of the week. So I technically mark marks. I would like to thank you again on this evening's agenda for Mrs. Cozar's 16 years of service, for your continued membership with PSBA, and for all the hard work that you do for the students of Greater Lake Trove. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Erin, and congratulations to Mrs. Heidi Cozar. And I think this may be the first time we've had a virtual award given here. Let's hope it's the last. Thank you so much, Erin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, as we move on, we'll be going next to education and planning with Mrs. Mayne, but before we do so, Mrs. Mayne, I have a quick question for you. Is it today special day? Don't lie. Isn't it true that today you're now older than me?
I'm 20 weeks old.
My age is younger than you, so congratulations.
Happy birthday!
And now I turn it over to you.
Thank you. We have a presentation this evening from the Partners in Education Foundation.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I am Jessica Urbannick, current president of the Greater Lake Trove Partners in Education Foundation, and I'm honored to be here tonight representing our board, which is made up of some very special people who give so much time, talent, and treasure to the foundation and are truly committed to our mission. Here this evening with me are our board members Kelly Visignani and Kayla Sutton. I also want to thank the foundation staff, Jessica Golden and Sharon Jun for all of their hard work in helping us focus on our goals and reach our goals as well. So thank you, Sharon and Jessica. It's hard to believe that it has been nine years since the Education Foundation was established, and I wanted to share just a few highlights with the Board of Education tonight. In 2015, we successfully completed the $5 million A+ capital campaign in support of the new athletic wellness complex, upgrading technology in the classrooms, creating the junior high arts corridor, and renovating the junior high entrance. I mention this project as the investment in upgrading technology, specifically the grants to purchase Chromebooks, proved to be very, very important to the district as they quickly transitioned to providing remote instruction in the spring due to COVID. Six years ago, the foundation started an annual giving fund campaign, and we are fortunate year after year to receive incredible support from our community members and alumni. I want to acknowledge the district's faculty and staff's incredible support of the annual fund, with nearly 70% of teachers and 100% of administrators making a personal donation to the foundation. Simply amazing. We established a planned giving program called the 1881 Legacy Circle. The name 1881 Legacy Circle pays homage to the school officials that in 1881 created the first high school for the Latrobe community. Through this program, donors can continue their Wildcat legacy or honor a loved one. In addition to annual fund donations, we have numerous donor designated gifts for classroom grants, scholarships, summer camps, elementary cultural enrichment, special education classrooms, and the Wildcat Emergency Fund. This evening, the foundation is announcing $174,404 in grants. All to benefit the students of Greater Lake Trove School District. The foundation is able to make these grants through the generosity of our donors. I want to thank our alumni, our community members, our parents, our current staff, and retirees that make the foundation a priority in their giving each year. The largest grant of $100,000 tonight was to support the purchase of new Chromebooks for this school year to ensure every student and staff member has access to up-to-date technology. With this grant, the foundation has invested now over $500,000 in Chromebooks in recent years, and we know that some students join classrooms via GLSD online. These additional Chromebooks have been so important. It's an important tool in providing instruction and maintaining communication between our students and teachers. I did want to mention the additional grants the foundation is providing this year. $28,000 in donor-sponsored scholarships to 23 graduating seniors. $23,344 to support special education department programming needs. $14,250 for teacher grants that support innovative classroom projects. $4,310, we don't like to round with the foundation, we'd like to give you exact numbers, from the River City Brass Band concert proceeds to support music department needs. We are planning to host that concert every other year, and the next concert will be in December 2021. Lastly, the foundation granted $4,500 from the Wildcat Emergency Fund for back-to-school supplies and recess equipment for elementary students. Each of the 88 elementary school classrooms received their own bag of recess equipment. We also provided emergency bottled water and earbud headphones for students to use with their Chromebooks. Several of our board members personally underwrote the costs of this initiative and hand-delivered supplies to women. We received hundreds, literally hundreds, of thank you cards from students, and I just wanted to share a few of them with you tonight because they truly are priceless. My favorite, "You are awesome sauce." Dear friends, thank you for the recess equipment. I love using the frisbee and tossing it around with my friend. Love Maddox. And they all have really great artwork as well. Thank you. This is me, my frisbee, and my friend. But we literally have received hundreds of thank you cards from the students and teachers as well. With tonight's grant presentation, I am proud to say that since the foundation's inception, our donors have contributed over $6 million to further our mission to ensure the highest level of education innovation, supporting GLSD students, faculty, and staff. In closing, during the current pandemic, the foundation remains committed, please know that, to supporting the unique needs of our district. The foundation is continually grateful to our donors for their commitment to supporting our students and giving them the tools they need to be successful and resilient. Now more than ever, we believe the school community sees the value of a public education, quality public education. Donations to our current annual fund, which the theme is "We Are All in This Together", is a vital component of the foundation's fundraising efforts, as it hopes to respond as needs arise during the school year. I want to thank the Board of Education and administration for being a valued partner with the foundation, and I want to commend your efforts for guiding the district through this challenging time and for everything that you do in doing what's always best for our students. So thank you very much. And we are going to have just a little tech presentation, so I would ask that Dr. Tucker and Mr. Luke Dasey and the student representatives, if you could join us very quick. Please, as we ask. Thank you.
If I could just take one minute to thank our foundation. I cannot begin to tell you the amount of hours and time spent meeting, discussing what our students need, our vision, how they can support our student body and our district. The members of our foundation are all so committed to Greater Lake Trove School District, and it just gives me, this is like the best night of my life right now, with everything going on and still having all this positive dollars and positive gifts and grants and comments made from Jessica Urbannick, and to know that we have a foundation that supports the Greater Lake Trove School District and always has our students and our staff's best interests. And I can't thank you enough, and I can't thank the entire foundation enough. So thank you again very much on behalf of the entire school district.
I'd like to add to that, you know, we are so appreciative of everything that our partners have done, and I caution everyone not to take this for granted. This is truly something special, and we need to celebrate it. So thank you so much.
And write a chat. Because I'm on the foundation too, so I'm. There you go, Jessica. Thank you.
Okay, we'll turn to the student report from Lauren Visignani and Hannah.
Good evening. So as far as elementary schools, red ribbon week is October 26th through October 30th, and the Halloween parties will be held on October 3 as well. The sponsors will be prevention months, so Blackboard and Blackson's have been occurring. School pictures are also usually taking place during the month of October. So, um, Mountain View Elementary School had their school picture day October 7th. LAS was October 13th, and Bagley was October 20th, will be October 20th, the 23rd. For the junior high school, there's still students are provided with multiple areas to eat lunch, including the gym, cafeteria, outside, and the library. Wildcat time is up and running for both the 7th and 8th graders, and students are picking activities or being pulled to enrichment every day utilizing the FlexTime manager software. Junior high students also participated in a fundraiser, selling various cookies and baked good items. All these proceeds went to scheduling school trends, considering pennywood and small school improvements. Also, 400 blueboard boxes were donated to the junior high school manufacturing class, where students will be able to individually build these boxes and take home. They'll be educated on the importance of conservation efforts, and these were donated by the Pennsylvania Game Commission's southwestern office. So as far as the brick-and-mortar classes we've scheduled, students are excited to pick it back in person. And I would also want a lot of positive feedback on the new, a different schedule of 85-minute classes. I've heard that it gives students a lot more time to do get their homework done because they don't have every class every day. So a lot of people seem to be liking that. This week, we also flipped our sets, so gives the students an opportunity if they extend off third set or second set in the morning, then they can now have a third set in the morning, which allows them to come in late if they'd like. Like the junior high, high school has many places for students to eat lunch, including the gyms, the CSC, libraries, outdoor courtyards, et cetera. Oh, and for clubs, Battle of the Hall will be occurring this year for the first time in several years. I'm coming west post-prone, however, there's still a court in game. And the annual club fair occurred a few weeks ago. Clubs have been having meetings and electing their officers for the school year. Looking at sports, lately in the past few weeks, sports have been allowing limited spectators. I know for volleyball, we've had two per-family tickets with wristbands showing up at sporting events. And October 23rd is our last home football game at Memorial Field at 7:00 PM. This is also, like Lauren mentioned, our homecoming game where the homecoming court will be addressed. And also, our Veterans Day ceremony, no parade, but is Wednesday, November 11th at 10:30 AM.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, girls.
I have a question. Hi, Dr. George. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to know about the mood is of the pro-life during, as the students feel about leaving.
Lauren, do you want to explain that?
Can you hear me to the question?
He wants to know the mood of the students in the building.
Oh, yeah, I think everyone's still happy to get back. Just like the few cases that have occurred this week, I think a lot of people are starting to get upset of assuming that we were going to go right back to the memorial room. So I think people just are really appreciative that we are back five days a week.
Dr. George, did you hear that response?
I heard it, just thinking for happy we've had.
Yeah.
Positive mood.
Yes, that's the gist of it.
Very good.
Thank you. Mrs. Mayne?
Yes. We'll move to the enrollment report. Ms. Ocaranka, any need to report this evening?
The regular enrollment report is attached for review, but I did want to mention that since our last meeting, I had Mrs. Pellis pull me the numbers of brick-and-mortar students and GLSD online students, and we had, since the last meeting, we have 93 fewer students in online instructions. We've had that number of students move back to brick-and-mortar five days a week. So our totals right now, we have 3199 in brick-and-mortar and 388 online. So a decrease of about 10.
Good to know. Thank you so much. The next two items on the agenda will be resolutions next week. The first one we passed before to approve the Greater Lake Trove School District's space for opening and health and safety plan, and the second one will be to approve the Greater Lake Trove School District's continuity of education plan for this school year. They will go to the agenda items. Again, we have a lot of programs and agreements to approve. The first one being the St. Vincent Bearcat Pepper Weedy S.T. Transition Program for the 2021 school year. The next one will be to approve the therapy source bonding agreement for the 2021 school year, then to approve the amendment to agreement for students A and B between Greater Lake Trove School District and the new store LLC for the 2021 school year. And then approve a transportation plan between Greater Lake Trove School District and Westmoreland County Children's Bureau. Approve memorandum of understanding between Greater Lake Trove School District and Westmoreland County Children's Bureau transportation procedure agreement. Approve the MOU between the Greater Lake Trove Education Association and Greater Lake Trove School District. Approve a calendar revision for the 2021 school calendar. I want to ask Dr. Tepper to talk.
Sure. The change on the calendar is for Election Day, November 3rd. Instead of our students coming into the building brick-and-mortar, they will participate in full online instruction that day because our buildings are being utilized for loading pools. It still counts as a full day of instruction. Also, that is a two-hour late start as well, so the students will be attending online instruction two hours later than they would if they were coming in on a regular day. In addition to that, our third quarter report cards, the date had been pushed back to after our In addition to that, our third quarter report cards, the date had been pushed back to after our spring break. Just to add up with the half-day that the teachers have, the two-hour late start the teachers have to prepare for. So those are the two changes on the calendar.
Thank you. Any questions, Walter? Okay, and the Summer twenty-twenty-two exam update, and then the stories, can you talk about that?
Sure. As everybody is well aware, the spring state testing was canceled in the spring of twenty-twenty. The school districts have an option to do summer testing. The summer testing had actually been postponed until the last week in September or the first week in October. But then another update was provided saying that due to the new pathways to graduation, that students do not have to take these exams for this set period. However, any students still wishing to take this Keystone exam, that would have been a student that completed a Keystone course in the spring of twenty-twenty. Any students still wishing to take a Keystone course should speak with their school counselor, and we will make arrangements for the winter testing.
Thank you. Thank you, Walter. All of those that I've read so far will all be on your agenda next week for the resolution for approval. Our next Curriculum Committee meeting will be held next Tuesday, October twenty, twenty-twenty, at six P M here in the C S A. And I thank you, Mr. Lucassio.
Thank you. Since Mr. Hauser is not here, I will continue on with finance. Next week, we will be asked to approve the Treasurer's Report. There is an attachment. If you take a look at that. The same thing for the, approve the payment of bills. We have the Act One Timeline Index and Important Dates. Is it attached? Is there anything you want to say about that?
Just that the primary election is May eighteenth, and everything is driven by that. So we'll hope to be prepared to make the recommendation on whether or not we're going to adopt the resolution to stay within the index. And we must do that by January twenty-eighth. But everything else stays the same. So we'll have to adopt proposed final budget by May thirty-first and a final budget by June thirty-eighth. So more to come.
Next week, we'll also be asked to approve the gifts and grants and donations that we determined earlier of the Greater Latrobe Farmers and Education Foundation. The next Finance Committee meeting will be Thursday, November tenth, at five-thirty at the C High School Library. At this time, we'll go to Facilities Operations and Planning with Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Lucassio. Next board meeting will be asked to approve a proposal for a district-wide bipolar ionization system installations with C and C industry name. If anybody has any questions, or Mr. Kirk can describe what the now system is.
Yeah, you can do it again. The proposals there is an attachment. Roughly doing a hundred and forty-seven GPS units. GPS is global plasma solutions. I spoke about this a little bit last month. For total value of four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, it was a substantial investment. The district is putting into this product. It is district-wide. It is something that I believe goes beyond COVID. It will definitely treat the air, make it more, better indoor air quality for your, you know, asthma-related issues, pathogens that we're dealing with this pandemic, but also just create a better environment for our district. This is part of our, we come from our capital funds, from our capital fund budget. It does take a hit. I expressed to the board last summer as far as the needs that we have throughout the entire district, this will always got to move to the top of the list. Things will happen to be shuffled down. One being our border system at high school, which we did make some improvements, but instead of having to replace and see a larger cost upwards of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace those units. We are doing a modification and kind of rebuilding them. This summer, you guys improved that a couple of months ago. So if that factor in, we won't see that large price tag without replacement, so this money kind of will take that spot. So we're in good stance as far as our budget and our funding for the capital improvements. We'll do this in a timely manner. We have installation going on in November and December. That's wrapped up by the end of the calendar year.
So I want to make sure I have this correct. So the cost for the bipolar ionization system, for the most part, is being covered by the money we save by repairing the borders versus replacing it?
In a sense, yes, you can say that, because it was allocated, that money was allocated for a capital improvement that since we made a different changes to that capital project, we're able to use that money for this as opposed to having to add to that capital fund.
And this repair that we did to the borders, what's the anticipated lifespan now?
Another four years.
Another twenty years. Thank you.
I guess Wednesday, when I will make those impressions, Kirk has said, you know, Kirk looked at various systems and narrowed it down to the bipolar ionization system, which was directly driven by the help of, keep the help of our students and our staff and our teachers in good stead. And tonight's example of it, I think some of our parents would be pretty good through here right now. For others, for the same reason, but different way. But I'd like to thank Kirk for his due diligence throughout that process, the bipolar system that falls within the guidelines that we feel comfortable with and to start the installation. Thanks, Kirk. Secondly, our next Facilities Operations and Planning Meeting minutes are attached on August eight, and our next Facilities Operations Plan Meeting will be at the afternoon, November fifth, three thirty to go. Thank you, Mr. Lucassio.
Thank you, Walter. Next, student activities and recreation. Next week, we'll be asked to approve the twenty-twenty-one sports, winter sports coaches and their salaries. We'll also be asked to approve a senior high school reading competition club with the current club advisor being Mrs. Kimberly Mallow.
Yeah.
Sea United Girls Volleyball will be October twentieth at six forty-five in the main give here at High School. And our next Athletic Committee meeting will be determined, but it would be, when we have it, will be held in the C High Library. Next, Community Relations, Mrs. Mainz.
Thank you. The minutes of the Late Trail Latrobe Parks and Recreation Commission meeting from August twentieth of twenty-twenty are attached. Our next Latrobe GLSD Parks and Recreation Commission meeting will be held this Thursday, October fifteenth at four thirty P M in the Latrobe Municipal Building in Castle Town. Thank you very much.
You want to continue on?
There will be two agenda items under the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit. The first to authorize the W I U Joint Purchasing Consortium representative an alternate for the twenty-twenty-one school year. And to approve a grant to advertise jointly as a member of the W I U Joint Purchasing Consortium for the twenty-twenty-one school year. That wasn't approved a grant, that's grant information, I'm so sorry. Both of those are, have attachments for the group. And the summary and executive report of the W I U Board meeting that is held September twenty-second, twenty-twenty are attached. The next W I U Committee meeting, this will be the first one we've been live in a long time, will be held on Tuesday, October twenty-seventh at seven P M in the third office of the W I U building.
Thank you. Next, the E W C E C, Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Cozo.
Yes, thank you. The agenda, the last meeting of September twenty-third is an attachment on your agenda this evening. And our next joint area, Joint Operating Committee meeting will be Wednesday, October twenty-eighth.
Thank you. Mr. Music Transportation?
Thank you. Tomorrow, we'll be having a Transportation Committee meeting, and that will be here at three thirty.
Thank you. Dr. George, are you still with us?
I am.
Do you wish to do the board policy, or would you like me to do it?
Well, I got it. So we're going to intend to drop the, put your next word. This policy has been a change of pattern, language, and I think there may be one, I'm not sure which, perhaps, finally. Mostly it's all, we've had the enforcers. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. George. So all of those policies are listed on your agenda, that we will be, we will be reviewing. Okay, next, Technology, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Lucassio. I'll be very important this evening. Our next Committee meeting will be held Tuesday, November tenth, at six P M here in the C S A. Thank you, Dr. Lucassio.
Thank you. Superintendent's Recommendations?
Thank you, Mr. Lucassio. Next week, the board will be asked to approve resignations, as stated, for Michelle Brown, Donna Brandt, Pearl Brazili, Deborah Conti, and David Cook. And we appreciate all of those individuals in their service. We will also ask to please approve professional personnel, substitute teachers, as stated. Nancy Kim Camicore and Abigail Cox next week. And also approve various support personnel classified appointments, which we are asking to be, Brenda Russell, a classroom assistant, to be retroactive to September twenty-second. Jessica Love, who is a substitute personal care assistant, retroactive to September twenty-fifth. And then a health room assistant, Rebecca Plummer, and Donna Brandt, our part-time personal nurse assistant, to be retroactive to October ninth. In addition, we would ask, and will be asking the board to approve support personnel supplemental appointments as a dramatic assistant, dramatic assistant volunteer, Christian Wedge, who's been assisting with our class play, and we would like to make that retroactive to October fifth. Under Other Business, we will be celebrating Red Ribbon Week, the week of October twenty-sixth to October thirtieth. And the end of the first quarter is approaching, which it's hard, tough to believe here, November second. And I had already mentioned about the calendar change with the November third being an online instructional day due to election polling sites, and it will still remain as a two-hour delay. We will be holding virtual parent-teacher conferences in all of our buildings Monday, November ninth, from the hours of five through eight o'clock P M. Please, if parents are choosing to have a conference, feel free to reach out to the school counselor's office or your classroom teacher at the elementary level for those conferences. Following Monday, November ninth, we will also have a full day of virtual teacher-parent conferences, Tuesday, November tenth, at our elementary board, or our elementary buildings. And that day will be an activity day, and no school for students. And our secondary schools will be participating in professional development activities on that day. Veterans Day, no school, November eleventh. And we continue at our senior high to have ongoing college virtual visits during lunch and learn. Most of these are held here in the Center for Student Creativity via Google Zoom. And any student or interested in those should be signing up with Mrs. Jessica Yutter in the main office at the high school. Our meetings, our voting meeting will be next Tuesday, October twentieth, at seven thirty P M here in the C S A. And we will only have one meeting in November, as, which is typical in the past, which will be Tuesday, November tenth, at seven thirty P M.
Is there anything else that any board members would like to bring up at this time? All right, saving none of this meeting is adjourned.